No, it is bad, isn't it?
All right, welcome everyone to our debate tonight. I'm Marielle Sutton, I'm the deputy, youth deputy mayor of Highland City Youth Council. Thank you all for coming tonight to the debate, to take time out of your busy schedules. We'd like to thank our candidates for coming as well, we're so excited to hear from you guys. Our prayer will be by Carrie Anne Skidmore, our service chair on Youth Council, and our pledge will be given by Simon Bliss, our events chair on Youth Council. We will now introduce our moderator for tonight, her name is Amber Bonner, she's from the Alpine School District Board, and I'm going to turn the time over to her.
Thank you, Marielle, welcome tonight, we're happy to see everyone, sorry that feels like it's a little bit loud. I am currently serving on the Alpine School Board, I cover Cedar Hills, Highland, most of Highland, a little bit is with our American Forecrup and Alpine. So I'm super excited to have this opportunity tonight, I don't live in Highland, I live in Cedar Hills, but I'm interested in what's going on in Highland and how we can improve things, so I'm excited about that. Really quick for our debate tonight, we will start with introductions by the council and the mayoral candidate, and they'll have one minute each to do their introduction, and then we have questions that were submitted ahead of time that we'll be asking, and also a few questions that were submitted by people who are attending this evening, and we'll also include some of those. So the candidates will each have two minutes to answer their question, the questions. Kurt Ossler is running unopposed in the mayoral race this year, and so he will do an introduction and a conclusion at the end, but will not be answering the individual questions, so that we'll have more time for the candidates who are running opposed, so you'll get to hear from them more. Election information for this year, there are two city council seats that will be voted on, so when you do vote, make sure you vote for two different people, and think about that. Those seats will run from January 2022 to December 2025. And then one last item of interest, there will be an informational meeting on the Prop 11, parks tax. Prop 11? Yeah, okay. On October 12th at 7 o'clock here at City Hall also, that will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. This debate will also be available on the city's YouTube channel. So with all of that said and all the business out of the way, let's get started. So we're going to start introductions, first we'll start with Kurt Ossler, and then the candidates drew lots before the meeting, so we'll start with Colby Gibson, and then Scott Smith, and then Jerry Abbott, and then Sarah Peterson with those introductions.
Okay, well, thank you. Once again, my name is Kurt Ossler and I'm running for mayor of Highland City. Okay, I'm probably walking more than running right now, so I'm amongst the walk. I've lived in Highland for 28 years, I have four children that we've raised here in Highland, I have served on Highland City's Planning Commission, and I'm currently serving on the city council. And I just want to tell you thank you for being here tonight, and I'll reserve till the very end.
My name's Colby Gibson, with nearly 40 years in Highland, I've seen a lot of things change, but nothing like what we're seeing today. There's a horrific change happening in our country, our state, our county, and even the city of Highland. I'm running for city council in an attempt to battle these negative things. They're making it a city I don't recognize. Well, I've never had political aspirations, I represent each one of you too busy with your own life and wanting the government to handle the items that are properly in their scope, and other than that, stay out of your home. Until 2019, a government agency, not even the federal government, made a decision that decimated my primary business. This woke me up to the dangers and the attacks of a republic and the lack of understanding between a democracy and a republic. The proper and best place to battle that is in our city. And then back up to the county and higher to the state, and moving on from there. If you believe similar to me, I'd love to have your vote.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Just for your information, Simon here is doing our timing for us, and I know you can't see the clock, correct? So Simon, would you maybe give them like just a hands up or something when you're, oh. Okay, I mean, I don't think they can tell when it's starting, so if you'll just say, you know, you're ready, then maybe that would help. Okay, thanks.
Okay. So, I'm Scott Smith, and my wife Catherine and I have lived in Highland for 33 years. I consider myself to be a Highlander, and we raised our family here of five children. You know, I love serving on the city council, and I've been wanting to give back to my community, because I'm a busy professional and still work full-time, but I love Highland. On the council, I'm an independent voice to avoid groupthink, especially on controversial issues. I'd like to talk a little bit in my minute here about the importance of being civil. The definition of civil is polite, courteous, and obliging. Kristin Sanema, that I don't agree with her politics, a senator from Arizona after being followed by a group of protesters into a public restroom, said, quote, "It is the duty of elected leaders to avoid fostering an environment in which honestly held policy disagreements serve as the basis for vitriol and permit unacceptable behavior." Tonight, we need to be civil.
I'm Jerry Abbott, running for Highland City Council, I've been the chairman for the Planning Commission for the last three and a half years. And during this election, I think I've been asked the most, why should we vote for a developer? Which is a great question. I own a development company in northern Arizona, I've also run Richmond American Homes and Philstone Homes. But why not a developer? I've enjoyed being on the Planning Commission, if you look at my voting record, you'll see that developers don't like me, because I know what they're doing. One of the biggest mistakes I see cities make is they don't ask for enough from developers. As a developer, I've never hit my cap of what a city will want. They're afraid to ask. I'm not afraid to ask, and I know what they're willing to do. I also know kind of how they like to get their projects done and what their motives are. I live in Highland, we moved here because of the trails, the open space, it was similar to where we had come from. We studied this location and we love it, and so I asked for your vote.
Hello. Let's try that again, hello, I'm Sarah Peterson. Earlier this year, as I was doing some reflecting on how I wanted to serve my community, a flyer came in the mail that said there were going to be some open city council seats, and I knew immediately that that's what I should do. My goal in running is to represent you and the residents of Highland. Winston Churchill once said, "Courage is what it takes to stand up. Courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen." This is a principle I have tried to teach my seven kids, that I hope my seven grandchildren will also learn, and one that I have employed throughout my life as a registered nurse and a director of operations for a tech company now. And it's certainly a principle that I'll employ on the city council. I have the courage to stand up, but I also have the courage to sit down and listen. So it's your vote and your voice, and I appreciate you all being here tonight.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. Is that, I just want to make sure, is that working to have Simon tell you he's ready? Or do you want him just to start when you start talking?
So when the beeper goes off, we should be done, right?
Yes, the beeper is the end of your time. We do have Carrie Anne, correct? Over here does have some flyers for you that will show you how much time you have left. I think you have a 60-minute, sorry, 60-second and 30 seconds, correct? And a 15, so she'll let you know how much time you have left as you're going.
He's basically pointing at the clock, right?
He is saying, he has to reset the clock after each person talks, so he's just, he's ready.
Lasers showing on me or something.
That's what it is, no. He's just telling you the clock is reset and you're ready to go.
Oh, okay, great.
So, okay, so for our first question this evening, since we started with Mr. Gibson with our introductions, we are going to start with Mr. Smith, we'll go to Mr. Abbott, and then Ms. Peterson, and then back to Mr. Gibson for this first question. Okay, so question number one. In December of 2019, the city council approved the disposal of open space property and a neighborhood trail in the Wimbledon subdivision. A referendum was filed and it will be on the November 2021 general election ballot. Where do you stand on this issue?
Well, I own this issue because I voted for that. And let me just kind of strand out a couple of false narratives. One, we're just talking about one trail, not all the Highland trails. So I love the trails in Highland, the Highland trails saved my life last year because when COVID hit, and I take care of COVID patients in the hospital, I walk that trail every day. So when I got COVID a year ago, I was ready. So I love the trails, and I've been responsible for the compromise that connected the Murdoch Canal Trail, and I voted for two or three other trails. We've also, as a council, unanimously removed the neighborhood option trail option. But there's a long history that goes beyond there, but I stand for my vote because I have personal integrity, people have been trying to get me to reverse it and campaign against it and different things. But the open space neighborhood brought a petition under that city ordinance three times with a super majority saying, "We want you to surplus this trail." They had beautiful sidewalks in front of their homes and an unmaintained trail that they had complained about for 18 years. Now, those people paid $240 on top of their property tax every year, and I've analyzed that. So some of the people down there are paying $600 in property tax a year, and I pay $383. So I have been consistent when a neighborhood comes to me, a majority of them, and says, "We need redress on that," I will support them. Now, the neighborhood option trail ordinance in 2013 was passed by a majority, a unanimous vote of the council, as a way to solve problems in the open space neighborhoods. So I was following what those people asked for based on a city ordinance. I love the trails, and I'm not here to surplus any other trails, we never will. So it bothers me that it's trails instead of a trail.
Okay, I am more voting against Proposition 1, primarily because it was a very flawed decision to begin with. One of the council members that voted at the time had a very big conflict of interest, and I noticed in this pamphlet it said there was no conflict of interest. Just because somebody states they have a conflict of interest and registers it and makes it legal for them to vote, it doesn't negate that there was a conflict of interest. This council member went out and got those signatures, and then brought it to the council, and then he voted on it even after citizens asked him not to vote. It's a clear conflict of interest. I will never vote where I have a conflict of interest where I will have personal gain. And the reason there's a flaw in this decision because of that conflict is if you can see the different colors, it's not an all or nothing sale. They are not, if you guys pass this and allow this trail to be sold, they're not required to buy it. So if every other system gets bought, the trails flood. And we're going to be stuck with trails that go to nowhere, and they'll be worthless. So it wasn't a good decision, if you want to sell the trails, get everybody to agree to buy the trails, period. But you also can't have a three to two vote when the other two members have brought up really good issues and they just go right to a vote. Currently, four of the existing council members support not letting the sale go through. I support not letting the sale go through, and it does set a precedence. Once a trail is sold in the city of Highland and it's an active paved trail, the city doesn't need an option trail option to go sell it, they can still sell trails anytime they want, it's city property. So I'm voting for this or against this proposition mainly because it's a very flawed decision. We're going to be stuck, because we already know there are some people that are refusing to buy it. We are going to be stuck with pieces that are, you can't maintain and you can't take care of.
So I also am in favor of saving our trails and voting against Proposition 1. So there are some flaws with what happened in that decision with the city council. But I think if we look at it as a principle, the principle and the value, do we want trails in Highland? And this sale would set a dangerous precedent. So I think that Highland residents with, you know, I think there's only been two people that I have talked to that are in favor of that sale, so they're highly in favor of trails in Highland. I can't think of another thing that serves the young, the old, the walkers, the joggers, the bikers. It really serves the residents of Highland, and it will continue to do so years after we're all gone from Highland. And so we think of that as a value. Now, part of the discussion has been, well, what about the maintenance of these trails? Certainly, the city should be committed to making sure they're maintained and appropriate so that not only do people enjoy them and use them, but they're not a burden to those that live and back up on those trails. I live in a neighborhood that's an open space neighborhood, so I pay my $20 a month, and I do it when I moved in, and I value that, and I'm not worried about that. And so I don't think we need to pass that to other residents, I'm happy to take that on. I don't want the precedence of selling our trails, and I want to maintain the principles and the values of Highland in maintaining and keeping those trails for the use of all of our residents. Once we get rid of them, we will not get them back. And our city is feeling pretty busy, and those trails are such a respite and a peace. I mean, you think about COVID and how many people were so thankful to walk those trails when they couldn't get out, so.
If Paul Harvey were alive and here today, he would say, and now for the rest of the story. For nearly 14 years, I lived on one of these trails, the trail that we're talking about, the only trail in Wimbledon. I paid $240 a year, what I considered an additional tax, with the expectation that the city would take care of the trail behind my home. Never in nearly 14 years did the city do any labor behind my home, no one disputes that fact. For many years, the residents on this trail and other trails in Wimbledon, which are not on this referendum, put their own labor in and cared for them, some spending upwards of $20,000 of their own money to make improvements. City wasn't kind. Every year, we, the residents, begged for some assistance and each time we were told the city had no funds. The natural next question is, what am I paying for then? Residents of this neighborhood banded together to offer a solution. This is a lightly-used trail, but you designated an optional trail because it's not critical to the trail plan for the city. Since the city cannot afford to care for it, let us buy it and take the liability off your hands. Over three years, we came and presented this to the city council, and each year they changed the rules. After finally, on the third year, a legal vote was achieved. Suddenly, people cared. Believing themselves lawyers, they canvassed Highland to let everyone know the evil land grabbers that were out to buy and destroy all the trails in Highland, deceitful messaging I'd never thought I would see in Highland. As a former resident of that neighborhood, I wish these warriors would have organized and volunteered time and money over 14 years to actually help behind my home. Instead, these people did anything but support their neighbors. Had they done this, they would have been righteous warriors, showing love and kindness and helping create unity and peace with their neighbors. Instead, these self-proclaimed warriors created more hatred and division in a neighborhood that is divided. With misleading orange signs that attempt to convince 4,700 homes and 20,000 people in Highland that a single, not plural, optional trail directly affecting 29 homes and that most 100 people should be decided in a tyrannical fashion by the city as a whole. They want residents who don't even know where the trail is, who know nothing of the history and will never use it, to vote against their neighbors who've been affected for two decades.
Okay, thank you candidates for your answers to that question. For question two, we will start with Mr. Abbott, go to Ms. Peterson, and then Mr. Gibson and Mr. Smith in that order. So question two is this. While decisions made by the city council impact all residents, often only a small number engage on any particular issue. How would you balance this input with the public interest of Highland as a whole?
You know, on the Planning Commission, we've had issues where we get residents that'll show up after the decisions have already been made and the plat's coming through. I've advocated quite a bit, and we continue to do so, that we do a better process at the beginning in informing all the citizens. I will tell you, as a developer, we're only required to notify people within a 500-foot radius of our project. And so if we just touch one home, we just tell that one home. And then just that one person shows up, and then when it gets far down the line where they can't do anything to change it, the rest of the neighborhood shows up and says, "Hey, why didn't we get a chance to say it?" Well, you weren't in this 500. I think that if you touch somebody in a neighborhood in that 500 radius, you should notify the entire neighborhood. I also want to do better on our online where we are able to, people can, right now you can put your email address online and be notified of these items. I will tell you that when I have a project that comes in, my ear is really perked up to the people that live in that neighborhood. But it affects everybody, just like trails, open space, density, that does affect the entire city. And I can tell you in other cities I've worked, there's a lot more involvement, where rooms like this couldn't even pack to get the people to come in and voice their opinion. And I would love that if Highland was more involved like that. And I think a lot of that is just through notification as projects come up, as issues come up. Because we're just up here representing Highland, we're not here to say what our own personal agendas are, what we're running for, we're here to make Highland Highland and protect our values, protect our way of life and our feel. Our property values are higher for that reason, that Highland is unique. It is different than the majority of the other cities here in Utah.
Yeah, I've heard several times from residents that they would like to be more informed. We, I also recognize that residents are very busy, raising families with busy jobs, callings perhaps in their church congregations. And so to recognize the constructs of people's lives and then determine how we can make it work for them and the communication work for them. So one thing is, I have been talking to people and knocking doors, is very few of them know that there's a two-minute video on YouTube about what happens at the city council meeting. Now, this is a service that's provided by John in the back, so shout out to him. But, and this is digestible, every single person that I have said this to said, "Well, tell me about it, let me put it in my phone right now, let me subscribe." Because that's something that's digestible and in reach for people with busy lives who would like to be more involved, but also have the constraints of other priorities. And so if we understand that. But I think earlier electronic notifications, doing a campaign so that people understand how they can be communicated with from the city, the email addresses, the texts, and so that maybe when we have new move-ins, can we get the word to them, this is how you can be involved in your local city? And so that they understand, and what nights city councils are on, they're pretty long. And so the two-minute council update, can we do that? Also, I think it's really important for the city council members to be involved and available. So city council members need to be responsive to residents as they email and phone call. If they're not, it's a little bit discouraging to residents if they're trying to get ahold of someone and they can't. Also making sure that our city personnel are friendly and available when the city needs, when our residents need them as well.
I think we've done some great things. Again, I would agree, a shout out to John Hart, he comes every single time and he makes a digestible version of this that anybody can listen to, because man, these meetings are long, and a lot of debate and a lot of discussion. I think the best thing that we can do is maintain our integrity. I would rather lose this election as a man of integrity than win it by sensationalizing stories and things that make it important. But if you want to get people interested, then you can sensationalize, and you can force people to think that bigger things are happening than what are really happening. We're just seeing that, and we're making things, trails is a big one, we're making trails, not a trail, which is the true story. Let's be honest, we have text messages, we have so many ways, there's letters, there are things that are going out. If people want to get engaged, they can get engaged, but a lot of people are apathetic and don't want to, and we can't force that. I love this town. I grew up here, and I grew up in a town where we cared for each other, and we looked out for each other, and we tried to figure out what was important. And I guess that's probably the best thing we can do, is if there's things that are important, we need to tell our neighbors about it. And again, not with sensationalism or anything else, but with real life, "Hey, this is something you might want to pay attention to." It's not that hard, and we don't have to tell big stories.
Okay, my turn. So I've been a strong proponent on the council to have more public input. And I sent a flyer around this week that talks about these very things, about transparency, communication. We have a very good city staff. But I think there's a tendency sometimes that people want to avoid what they refer to as public clamor. And in January this year, I said, "You know, I know that's a legal technical term, but clamor's offensive to me. We need to call it citizen input and discourse." Because my feeling is, is if we advertise better and we have public hearings and people come and talk to us about their concerns and different things, that in the end, we get a better decision if we pass an ordinance or there's a development or any of those things. We need public input. Now, there was a move because of the change in state code to eliminate or decrease some of the Planning Commission meetings, and the Planning Commission, as I understand, supported that, and to simplify the process for development. Now, I understand where the city staff and everyone's coming from, because it's nice to have less public hearings. But Mr. Ossler and myself and other members on the council said, "We want to hear more from people." So in my flyer, I talk about suggestions that have already been mentioned. I think we can use our website more effectively, it's a great website, but people don't read it every day, of course. So what are some other things we can do? We can encourage citizens to sign up for automatic texts and emails about city meetings and events. We can use the electronic flashing sign, and I've said this several times in city council meetings, to tell people about important upcoming things. And how about if we have a list of the HOA chairman in the city? Because most of us live in HOAs, let's communicate with them so they can spread the information about an upcoming important debate at a city level.
Okay, thank you candidates. One more piece of information for the general public. This election will again be entirely by mail, so you should watch your ballots. They should be arriving starting next week. Those ballots then can be dropped in any Utah County ballot drop box, I believe there's one just on the north side of this building, starting October 12th and running until November 2nd at 8:00 PM. If you would like to mail your ballot, that ballot must be postmarked no later than Monday, November 1st. So just some information for you. Okay, question number three, and for this question, we will start with Sarah, and then move to Mr. Gibson, and then Scott, and then Jerry. So for this question, as a council member, when is it appropriate to recuse yourself from the state senate? from voting on an agenda item due to a conflict of interest? Also, should the city code of ethics require city members, city council members to recuse themselves when they stand to profit personally from a decision?
A city council member should recuse themselves from the vote whenever a personal interest is involved in that vote. So, whenever there's any personal gain, or even if there might be a personal loss, that should not only be made known, which is the law, so you don't have to recuse yourself, but ethically you should. And I would always recuse myself, and not only that, but if another council member had significant personal gain or loss and should also recuse themselves, I would work to hold them accountable. So, should it be part of the city ethics? I believe so. I believe it's a basic matter of integrity. I believe it's very difficult, even if you're giving it your best effort, to be completely objective when you have something to really gain or really lose. And so the only appropriate thing to do is recuse yourself from that vote, let the other city council members do their job, and so that it's fair, and also that you can really listen to the people of the city. And so, yes, I believe it should be part of the city ethics, and I would certainly recuse myself and hold other city council members to that same standard.
It is part of the city ethics. You do not need to recuse yourself if you go and, for example, have three or four legal experts who tell you it's not illegal, that you are not only gaining something personally, but you're representing a demographic. Every single person on the city council is gonna come in here with some sort of an agenda. That's why we're running. Either it's an agenda to make Highland better than it is today, or it's an agenda because you think you can do something. Everybody has one. And if you claim that they don't, then we're not being honest. Now, it doesn't have to be a negative issue. And there's no reason, obviously, that, I kind of, I laugh a little bit at the city council meetings, because we seem to have such an, almost a virtue signaling now, where I would like to potentially recuse myself because my brother, sister, cousins, last dog breeder's owner told me about a property that we're discussing right now. These things don't make sense. We don't need to go ahead and, you're shaking your head going, "What does that mean?", and that's what I did on purpose. It's crazy. We don't need to virtue signal on these things. If there is something that is one-on-one, if I had a piece of property to buy, for example, and it's the only thing on the agenda, and I come in, then yes, as a city council member, I would do that, because it's only me. But if we're talking about something that affects a large group of people that I was elected to represent as part of the republic that makes up the city council, not a democracy, then I would absolutely believe it is my responsibility to represent my group that brought me in.
You know, every election, we talk about conflict of interest, and it's used as a political weapon. So, if I think I'm having a conflict of interest, like this week, they were talking about something on the agenda about my neighborhood, I said, "I live there, I have a potential conflict of interest." And I turned to the city attorney and I said, "Am I allowed to talk about this? Because I know more about it than anybody in here. And two, do I need to recuse myself?", which I would have done if he'd said, "Yes, you need to." But we all live in different parts of the city, okay? And we could all go about recusing ourselves for everything, but a lot of times, we're elected to represent that area of the city. And so, I got accused on the first five minutes when I got into the new city council in 2018 by two citizens of having a number of conflicts of interest, including the fact that the governors appointed me to the Utah State Developmental Center Governing Board. I don't make one penny, I've never made a penny from serving the disabled there. And because I was on that board, the development south of the high school, because of my influence, is in Highland, the density is down 39%, and the east-west corridor compromise was accomplished in the east-west quarters in Highland and not in American Fork. So, I think we need to be careful about accusing everybody of conflicts of interest as a political weapon, because it's not true.
If you Google "conflict of interest," it says a situation in which a person is in a position to derive personal benefit from actions or decisions made in their official capacity. In this particular instance, this council member is getting a benefit in purchasing the land behind his home along with the trail. He also went out and gathered those signatures to do that. And because of that, you have a flawed decision. If this decision was to sell all the trails, it wouldn't be as bad. But he's put the city in a bad position if some of these do not sell. Just because something is legal doesn't mean that it is ethical. I've been in big corporations, I've signed conflict of interest disclosures all the time. So, if somebody thinks that because it's legal, it's okay, then that's their personal opinion. But I'm telling you, as a council member, if I have a conflict of interest, I will not vote on it. And if another council member has a clear conflict of interest, I will also not vote on it. It's just that simple. When I was being interviewed by a junior at Lone Peak, I said, "Hey, why don't you go read the propositions that are being done?" When he came back, I looked at him and I said, "So, did you read the part where one of the council members is buying the property behind his thing?" And his eyes got really big, and he was shocked. His expression said it all. A junior in high school knows that that's not an ethical thing to do. And just because something is legal, doesn't mean that you do it. If I go buy a piece of land after I'm elected and I'm a representative, and I go plat it and I do everything, and then I come and bring it to council, and I say, "Oh, I'm voting for this, but just so you know, I signed the disclosure, I talked to the attorneys, but I'm gonna vote to approve my own project." That's wrong. You would recu, that vote would have not passed if he had recused himself. The mayor was against it, and there were a lot of questions. Go watch the video, and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you for your answers. So, question four. So, for this question, we'll start with Colby and move to Scott, and then Mr. Abbott and Ms. Peterson. This question is, "The council has placed a parks, sales, and use tax proposition 11 on the ballot for voter consideration. What are your thoughts on the proposed tax?"
I don't like it. And I don't like it because right now, we are not in a good position to be putting more taxes on people. We have, we talk about how fiscally sound Highland is, and fiscally conservative Highland is, and I disagree. I think we are fiscally sound. But when you have individual open space developments running huge deficits that are being made up for by other open space developments, I don't consider that fiscally conservative. Canterbury South operates a $28,000 deficit every single year, that includes Mitchell Hollow Park. Wimbledon, the one on the referendum, without including anything on those trails, operates at a $16,000 deficit every single year. Island Town Center Meadows operates at a $26,000 deficit every single year. So, yeah, we can talk about taxes, and we can talk about other things, but I think we gotta talk about fees, and we need to talk about things that actually need to be fixed first. And we have an awful lot of fees. And just so you know, fees, for those who are not aware, are on a ballot, initially, or they are not on a ballot, excuse me, they're in an appellate court right now. Because Pleasant Grove has been sued and lost, because they decided to do a tough fee instead of a tax, and it was determined it should have been a tax. If that is determined, that, and that holds in the appellate court, they have to refund every single thing they've collected. If that happens to us, again, trying to be fiscally conservative, I believe in getting ahead of it. And if that happens to us, just on open space fees, you're talking virtually the size of our entire annual budget that we would need to be refunding. That's not fiscally conservative, that's a big deal. These things need to be fixed.
Okay, let me just talk about the park tax in a minute. But I sent a flyer out talking about the remarkable job we've done in Highland with limited financial resources. And we've lowered our debt by 71% in the years that I have served. We are soon, within five to six years, going to be a debt-free city, which will free up $1.37 million a year in bond payments that we can then put on our parks and trails. Now, Highland's kind of an interesting place, you know, on the city council, the most important thing we vote for is infrastructure things, like culinary water, sewer, and these other things. The trails and the parks enhance our style of living. But we, as Highlanders, have got to make a decision about if we're going to finance those trails and parks if we really want them. So, we're talking about tonight, we gotta save all the trails. But we gotta pay for them and maintain them, because the older trails in the city, especially in some of our parks, have become a safety issue besides a maintenance issue. So, we're gonna have to make the hard decisions that way. So, do I support the park tax? Well, the thing about the park tax is the following, I don't like increased taxes, I voted against increased taxes. But the park tax is equal to, it's a sales tax, it's one cent for every $10 you spend in Highland, which for the big spenders is 10 cents for every $100. You already pay the park tax in American Fork if you shop there, you already pay the park tax in Cedar Hills, but we don't benefit from it. Now, it's felt like that we could raise up to $164,000 a year from people shopping in Highland. So, the vote's up to you, it's a public vote. Personally, I'm probably gonna vote for it.
So, before we moved here, we lived in Flagstaff, Arizona, where they have a FUTS trail. It's an amazing trail, it's paved, it's plowed, you can get anywhere in the city on these trails. And Highland has the big potential of having that completed. Are there issues with it? Yeah, I've heard a lot of issues. I've gone out to people's homes, where I've seen partial trails, trails that are not maintained, although if you go look at these trails, they're beautiful. Now, in order to maintain those trails, you have to pay for that. This tax, as he has said, it's a minor tax, it's small, it'll raise about $100,000 a year. We can't get rid of the open space fees, because these were conditions upon approval of those projects, and that would just, then you would have to raise taxes quite a bit if that were to go away. I don't live in an open space community, but I would support this, because I want that trail system to be good. And is it gonna happen overnight? Absolutely not. The city just passed a trail improvement program, where they're, put additional funds from a county tax towards those trails, and they've been making progress, just like they did with the roads. I'm all for, we have one of the lowest tax bases in the state, we're low on debt, I mean, council's done a great job, previous, and I would continue that, to continue to lower the debt, to continue to be financially, fiscally responsible. But I also don't wanna get a state where, when I moved here, the roads were horrible. I could tell you where every sewer hookup was, when I'd go to somebody in my ward, I could hit every sewer hookup. And if you let roads just decay and go away, they cost a lot more, and you have to fix them later. Same with your trails, same with your parks. I'm glad it's on the ballot for people to vote, to get a temperature of where we're at, and do we really want trails? I really want trails in this community, I think it makes us unique, and it really raises our property values.
I too am in favor of this tax increase, and will be voting for it. So, a lot of the reasons have been said, it's a very low tax rate, the cost of things are going up, the taxes that we pay are not quite as, going up as quickly, thankfully. I don't like taxes any more than the next person, and I believe in keeping taxes as low as possible, but we do have to make some hard decisions. It's clear that we do value parks, it's clear that we value trails, it's clear that we value open spaces, and it's clear that we would like those to be maintained. But for those services to happen, they have to be paid for in some way. Governments are not money-making entities, they only spend money on behalf of the residents. So, that needs to be reasonable, that needs to, we need to make sure that if that passes, that every penny is spent responsibly and is spent where it's tagged to go in keeping up the parks and recreation. So, I too am in favor of that.
Thank you. One other item of interest for our audience, if you are interested in a voter information pamphlet, they do have them here tonight, and they are also available on the city's website. Okay, question number five. For this question, we'll start with Scott, move to Jerry, then Sarah, and then Colby, you'll wrap up that question for us. Okay, question five. The property owned by Patterson Homes, known as the Longhorn Field at SR 92 and 6,000 West, is one of the last large undeveloped parcels in Highland. If the property owner would like to develop this property while you are on the council, what process would you go through to determine the best use of that land?
Well, this property has been brought to the council twice before, and there have been different proposals by the property owner. At one time, there was a proposal to have some commercial along there, and we heard from the citizens, and they didn't want commercial in that area. Patterson, on the north end of that property, just presented a development, Zoned R140. So, that basically means 40,000 square feet or acre lots. We approved that. And so, my feeling is, is Patterson's will probably continue to come forth wanting to develop that property at R140. So, the council's role with any development, because of property rights, is that we may need to make sure that the zoning that's there is followed, and that the development code is followed. We then do our very best to mitigate the impact. Now, if the Pattersons come and want to rezone that, that's where we get into a lot of public discourse. So, it's been tried twice in the past, and I support the property rights, but it's Zoned R140. So, if it's gonna be zoned different, or they're gonna bring other things in there, then they'll have to request zoning changes, and that's where the council has a lot of effect. Now, the first time they came forth, people spread the rumor that they were gonna build a Home Depot there, and everybody knew about it except Home Depot. So, we've gotta be careful that we don't spread false information, and so we need to be truthful with people, and we need to notify them, and we need to get public input.
So, I live right there in Bull River, and I've been on the planning commission the times that they, Patterson has brought that project to be developed with higher density, open space. And I'll tell you, as a developer, I've done a lot of open space communities, and they're beautiful, they're some of the best projects that we do. But the big mistake Highland made was when they said, "We'll take care of the open space" instead of an HOA. I would love it if the city said to me, "Hey, do you mind if we take care of the open space? Because then I could just wash my hands of it and give it to the city, and I'm out of there." And now you have the city and the citizens against each other. With an HOA, they're regulated by state and federal, they have to have funding, they have to maintain their open spaces, and we wouldn't be in the problem that we're in. I want it to be R140, I don't want commercial on there. I will also tell you that the city is going through a process for the general plan right now, and I've stated publicly, you know, I don't want this to be a workaround for Patterson to where they can get commercial outline there, or higher density outline there, because the majority of the time they were shot down in our meeting was, "It didn't meet the general plan, it didn't meet the general plan." And so, am I open to something that they might present that could give a bigger feel, an open space? R140, you can go two-story, you can cram it all together, it could still look dense. If you do an open space community right, you can limit it to single stories, you can eliminate fencing in open spaces that'll be like maintained. And just as a side thing, I also wanna see that all of our parkways are hardscaped and not grassed, to help save some of the water and some of these issues that come forward. But I don't want that, that's our front door, and I don't wanna see commercial along that entrance when people come into Highland and they don't see all the standard, different commercial, and all of our commercials in one location. It lets you know that we're a rural community and we're unique. And so- And so I look forward to the general plan, but I'm also very cautious that we're careful with that piece of property because it is our front door.
So that is one of the last large pieces that is available for development. There'll be some smaller pieces, and there's some other little areas, but that's going to be one piece that a lot of people have been and will continue to be concerned about, and rightly so. So we have a master plan in place, and we certainly need to honor that master plan. We also need to honor the property rights, but those property rights should follow what the master plan is. If anything is to change in the master plan, and if, as plans are set forth and presented to the city council on the Patterson property, then we need to make sure that we communicate with the residents so that we have resident input. We need to make sure there's public carings and the residents are available. I support the, and honor the R140 lots and the filling of that, and also making sure that we are aware of those property rights too. I don't want to step on someone's property rights, but there is a master plan in place, and that needs to be honored.
Like many of you, what I want is for those Longhorns to stay there forever. Unfortunately, we can't do that because it's not ours. So when they come, it's zoned a certain way, and the rules are already set up that way. What I would like is to recognize that it is R140, not to make major changes. If somebody wants to change it, I guess the best thing would be to raise, you know, the twenty-five million or whatever you need and go buy it and keep it how it is, but I can't do that. I think the things we need to pay attention to when it does come around, that a lot of people don't worry about is we have, again, I'm a big messaging person, right? So as we talk about the message that we're sending, we can go and we can develop all these things, but I mean, all summer long, we've had this message, "Cut back your watering, cut back your watering, cut back your watering." And everyone says, "Well, when you develop, they have to bring in water rights, water shares," and they do, but a hundred percent of zero, if the water's not there to share, is still zero. I believe that part of what we have to do, if water is as critical as what they're telling us it is, then we probably need to slow down our building and stop issuing so many building permits, and that is something that the city council should do to protect the city, rather than saying, "Hey, we've got unlimited resources because they brought us all these shares of water." Again, if the water's not there to get where it needs to go, it doesn't matter if we have a ton of shares. So that's probably the most important thing, is, I mean, if we're a dry year, we've been a couple of dry years, if it continues, then that's really what the city council needs to take care of, is protect existing residents. We don't tell existing residents to stop watering and stop taking care of their things so that we can have future residents continue to build.
Okay, thank you. Well, it looks like we're rapidly approaching eight o'clock, the goal was to be finished at eight, so, or shortly thereafter. So I think we'll ask one more question, and then we'll give all of you, including Kurt, the opportunity to have one minute as a conclusion sentence, okay? Conclusion piece. Okay, so for this question, question six, we will start with Jerry, then Sarah, then Colby, and Scott, you'll finish up for us. Okay, so this question is, "How long have you lived in Highland, and what committees have you served on, or in what other ways have you contributed to our community?"
I've lived here for fourteen years, and I've been on the planning commission and currently the chair for three and a half years. I've served on my HOA board and as the president thirteen years, pretty much the whole time I've been there. I've also been a scout master for ten years, and if any of you guys can feel my pain, that's a lot of service. And I've been in the young men's program ever since I've been here. A lot of paintballing, a lot of camping, a lot of building our future generation with these young men. I love to serve, I have the capacity to serve, the time to serve, the resources to serve, and have always felt it a duty that if available, should do so. And so I'm excited to be on the planning commission, and I hope to be on the city council and continue to serve there as well, because I plan to be here for a very long time.
I have been in Highland for two years. I lived in Leyton prior to that for many years. I came here because of a job change, and so I didn't anticipate moving, but when my job changed, I looked for a community that I felt met my values and my wishes, and for my family. And so as we researched cities, Highland was the place that was chosen for us to relocate. While I've only been here two years, I think that's a wonderful thing, because it brings a new perspective, it brings new ideas, a fresh outlook, and I have served in many capacities as it's just who I want to be and who I intend to be. So I don't wait, I don't intend to wait five, ten years until I serve my community in really key capacities. I have served as a state delegate, and I certainly have served in many capacities in my ward and stake, and continue to do so. So, and I look forward to serving in this capacity and bringing that fresh idea, that fresh love for Highland. And I am a part of quite a lot of other people who are newer to Highland, and so also are looking to serve and be part of this community.
So I am, I moved to Highland when I was four years old, and have been a resident most of the time since then, so going on forty years. As far as service goes, probably the most impactful thing is I have twenty years as a scout master in one form or another, with monthly camps and donating a week in those summers to take people. The interesting thing about that is, those of you who don't know, I have four daughters and one son, the son's the youngest, and the whole time I was a scout master, it was while my daughters were that age, never when my son was that age. And that's okay, because they say, you know, when you have sons, you worry about your son, when you have daughters, you worry about everybody else's son, and that's what I did. I spent time teaching, and we sat around campfires and had real lessons on what matters in life. I've been attending city councils since they were held in Highland Elementary, again tied to scouts. Highland Elementary was the first one I remember, we sat over there, and it's fun to look through the old records, and there's names I recognize, and people that have been here forever that I just, that I just knew, Labarans and Trams, and just a whole bunch of names that are all throughout there, and these are the original Highlanders, you know, these are the people that started out, and they did great things. You know, we have great, great people, and we've got a great legacy that makes Highland what is Highland, and that legacy is what I want to continue. I want to keep the things that are beautiful and amazing, and their traditional values, and it's us caring for each other and really taking care of each other.
At this stage of my life, my family's raised, and we all know how our children make their own decisions, but I have wanted to give back to my community, I want to burn out, not rest out. So I'm going to tell you the things that I've been involved in. Besides being on the city council, I'm on, as I mentioned, the governing board at the Utah State Developmental Center for the mentally and physically disabled, I was appointed there for a second term by the governor. I've served eight years on the library board. I think libraries are an important part of a city. Okay, I've served on the animal shelter board for three terms now, when I was on the council before and now. I've also served, actually, it's two terms, I'm sorry, I've been on Lone Peak Safety Board, I'm the treasurer of the Friends of the American Fork Library, and my favorite appointment is I'm on the garbage board, which is actually the North Point Transfer Station. So I've done my best to serve, I've served in my church, I've served in many different levels, I've been a state and county delegate to one of the parties. I want to answer a couple other things, so just reflect back on a couple things that have been said, because I'm getting kind of some of the last say. One, there was a statement made, that the, since we've been talking about the Wimbledon Trail a lot, that it's in good shape. Well, last year I got a seal coat, and partially the trail was broken up, but it's like putting lipstick on a pig, you still have a pig and we're going to have to rebuild that. We're fooling people if we think that we're going to, we have the funds now to rebuild our trails. We won't know how much it costs until we get the bids. For example, we're building a new trail, the city council was told it would cost a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, when we got the bid, it was five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So there's a false narrative out there that with the funds we get, that we're going to maintain and rebuild the trails. I just wanted to clarify those things.
Okay, well, thank you to everyone who's attended tonight, we appreciate you coming, and I hope that you've been able to gain some insight into the candidates and think about who might represent you well. Lastly, tonight, before we go home, we're going to give each candidate one minute to give some concluding thoughts or some more information about themselves if they would prefer. The way that has been set up is to start with Colby, and then Scott, Jerry, Sarah, and then Kurt Ossler will wrap us up, if that's okay, as your mayoral candidate. So thank you for attending tonight, thank you to the candidates for making the time, and thank you for being willing to serve. I think our community government is really important, and it makes a lot of difference in our lives, and thank you for your willingness.
Thank you, Amber. Pondering what really makes Highland unique, I reflect on my childhood here. My Highland was a place where another mother could call mine and say, "Hey, is Colby old enough to drive?" I wasn't, I was thirteen. My Highland is a place where the sheriff is called on our house because I'm burning something in the backyard, carpet, and who knows what else, making this black nasty acrid smoke, and the sheriff pulls up, and instead of getting upset, he educates me, puts out the fire and says, "Hey, Colby, can you understand why that would make your neighbor upset with all that black smoke going right into his backyard?" And those are life lessons, that's the stuff we're looking for. My Highland held the traditional values of hard work, integrity, fiscal intelligence, peaceful navigation of conflicts, and most important, proper understanding of the role of government, which is to support and strengthen the individual family. Everything that we do here should be set up to support that individual family unit. My Highland was a place of peace and caring for each other, I believe we can create that and strengthen that more than it's been, but it's not going to be by virtue signaling or sensationalizing the issues with signs and other things. Only by embracing these traditional values and the heritage of Highland can we really repair and improve our community.
Okay, I had planned on giving a nice summary thing on my campaign, but I want to talk about something we haven't talked about tonight. I have worked on the council to preserve the boundaries of Highland because I think it's very important if we want to have lower density. So the council this week just entered into a three-party agreement, which is probably an okay agreement, but it allowed Lehigh City to annex a hundred and nine acres in the northwest section of Highland that has been, according to the nineteen ninety-nine agreement between Lehigh and Highland, has been part of what we thought were in the Highland boundaries. So I think there's going to be a lot of problems with this development up over the hills and adding a lot of traffic congestion and crowded schools. I have worked hard to preserve our boundaries, and I hope people in Highland appreciate that because it lowers the density and congestion.
One of the reasons I'm running also is because Highland is running out of developable land, and I have seen in other small towns, when they get down to the last few parcels of land, they try to cram as much density as they can, as much things as they can in these last pieces of land, and it totally destroys the feel, the values of that town. There will be some annexation things that come up, but I will tell you, I will not get the city into a lawsuit that we can't win. I will listen to the advice of attorneys, I will look at the issues, and I'll make the best deal for Highland to protect those boundaries, because it doesn't do us any good to get in a battle that, through, my boss always said, "Take the insurance. If an attorney tells you something, listen to it, and if three of them tell you something, really listen to it." And so it's important, as we get through this last phase, and especially with the general plan being updated, I'm really concerned about that because so many special interests can work their way into that general plan, especially when we're so close to the end. Do we really need to spend the money to do that? But that's why I'm running, I feel that what I know will help the existing new council in making those decisions.
So how do you create a strong community? When I hire someone at my company, there's certain traits that I look for, because there's some things that I cannot teach, and I bring a lot of those things to this position. So I bring a passion for, and a love for my country and for my city. I bring an ethical value. I bring a passion for individuals, for families, and my community. I bring an understanding of financial management, of strategy, but also taking care of those individuals and families, because that is what makes a strong community, and you cannot teach that. Sometimes you can learn pieces of it, but it has to be how you live and who you are, and that's what I promise you that I bring to this position. So again, I want to tell you that it's your vote, it's your voice, and I would ask for that. Just in closing, I want to, once again, say what Winston Churchill said, "Courage is what it takes to stand up and speak, courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen."
Thank you. I want to tell you all thank you for running. This is, this is now where the push comes. If you can give me a little bit of apologies, we're going to probably go about three or four minutes since I didn't have the opportunity maybe to visit on a couple other items. I am excited to serve as the mayor of Highland. It's going to be a unique experience coming up, I am worried about some of the things I shared earlier about public safety, worry about the motions of the public safety as they do service in the community, I am supportive of our public safety and our police department. As your mayor, I will still go out and research all the different sites where changes are going to be made. I will visit with the residents to try to understand what their concerns are there. I will also then come back and share my opinion with the council and try to have an influence. There's been a couple of items that's been brought up tonight that I'd also like to be kind of discuss. If an agenda item is being presented that appears to be a conflict of interest for myself or council members specifically, where there might be a beneficial financially, I would expect those council members and myself to accuse themselves. I really don't care if by declaring that you have a conflict of interest and makes it legal, I don't still think that we should do that, they need to have higher integrity. Voting when there's a conflict of interest hurts the trust of residents in their elected officials, and it also hurts the decision process and Highland as a whole. I think residents deserve better. For me, I'd like to kind of discuss a little bit about the Wimbledon proposition. In my opinion, the Wimbledon submission vote to sell five point five acres of open space and one point one miles of actively used asphalt trails was a bad vote. It doesn't benefit Highland as a whole. I see that there would be material interest to the other residents of Highland, and once again, I believe is a bad decision. Currently, four out of the five current city council members support voting against Proposition One to save the trail in Wimbledon and the open space. Concerns I had about the vote, I personally felt that there was a conflict of interest with the council person that did vote on December third, two thousand and nineteen, because there was a financial benefit for that council person. I also had concerns about how the way their signatures were collected. As a city council member, I heard that there were several residents that felt bullied, coerced, and harassed into signing the petition. When the Wimbledon application was turned in, it wasn't the same application that residents had signed. Financial benefits for selling of the trail, there's been discussions on how and would benefit Highland financially. I disagree, it will benefit Highland financially, because of the phased approach that's been talked about tonight, by having the property where they are segmented in the purchases, it will break up the trail, we will not get the financial benefit, but we will have a broken trail. broken trail. Precedents. In my opinion, if we sell open space and trails in Wimbledon, it sets a precedence. Future taxes to maintain trails. Currently, as a city council, we've allocated an extra $100,000 a year and we've done the last two years to go towards trails. This money has come from the Core Simp Sales Tax that comes from Utah County. We've come up with a five-year trail maintenance plan to go over all the trails to try to maintain what we have. We've been able and accomplished that we've been able to silicone crack seal over 60% of the trails. We've been sensitive that there's been some maintenance issues. I hope the residents have noticed in the last year or two that the open space is being maintained better. We are mowing more frequently our native vegetation. These trails Highland residents walk daily. I've seen personally as schoolchildren are walking on them to go to school. These trails are developed and because they help us develop a community feeling, I believe they need to be saved. I encourage anyone that is considering voting for Proposition One as a yes, go walk the trails there in Wimbledon. Go see for yourself. You make the decision if the city should sell that property or not. Go walk them. On a couple of other items that came up, about Proposition 11, that is going to be the sales tax for the parks. I'm in favor of that. Currently, we are already paying it down into American Fork and other... in the Cedar Hills as we shop. This is a tenth of a penny that will be on the tax that will be coming in. It's a sales tax, but you get to decide if that's something you'd like to do. It will help us in our parks. We are trying to do a better job. One of the values I hear the most that residents love is about open space. They love the open field. We need help in making sure we can maintain that. Concerning the Patterson that came up, I want to tell you, I think I agree with all of you. I think all of us are pretty well in agreement on what's going to happen there in Patterson. Here's where it's important and where we've got to be careful on our vote here. We are going to open our general plan if we have funding this year. That means we're going to need input from all the residents. We're going to need to have different cottage meetings or neighborhood meetings and then we're going to also have a lot of open houses so we can get the vision of Highland. And as we've heard, it's very important that we paint the correct picture. So, when it comes and goes in the future, we can protect Highland's values. Once again, I just want to tell you, I asked for your vote and I thank you for your courage to have me as the mayor. I am nervous. I'm not going to say it's not something there is to... I'm going to... I'm going to do my hardest. I'll try to do my best. I just asked for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. I'd like to give them all a round of applause for coming tonight. And thank you for your willingness to serve. Also, thanks to Highland City for hosting this evening. Thank you to Corinne. Oh, okay. Sorry, apparently I'm not supposed to be doing all this, but thank you to Corinne and the U.S. City Council also for all of the help they've been doing.
All right. Before we go home, we'd like to present Amber Bonner with this gift to show appreciation for her being here tonight. We would again like to thank our candidates for also being here tonight and you all for attending this debate. We hope that you have a good night. Thank you.